You to this meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission as we celebrate the Sioux Empire Fair and we've all got our jerseys on, I thought we should wear our shirts backwards because there's still a lot of great concerts and activities out at the fair this week. So, I hope everybody can take advantage of that. And with that, we'll go ahead and open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Just a reminder to everyone to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Hiebarger and Craig is here if you need a listening device. So that takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is I'd consider a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes from July 30th, 2019. Minutes?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $2,189,940.78.
Hey, the bills, second.
Sorry, motion in a second, any comments?
Madam Chair, I'm still looking for my spot here, but the highway fund is the preeminent cause of cost here. I think it's 1.6 million. So, anyway, that's my comment.
Thanks. Lots of work being done on the roads this time of year, so. So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, I'd recommend for review the Mobile Crisis Team annual stats through July 2019. It's a great report that shows a lot of the really great effective work that that Mobile Crisis Team does for the county and we appreciate that. Next item is personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve routine action.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to recognize significant employee anniversaries. Carrie Dever, good morning.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a fairly long list for you today, starting with five years of service. We have Kyle Ritchie, Seth Hodges, Tanner Corney, all deputy sheriffs with the sheriff's office, and Sherrell Logue who's a legal office assistant with the state's attorney's office. Celebrating 10 years of service, we have Cory Heiss who's a correctional officer at the jail, Tim Gusterson who's a corporal at the jail, and Michael Walker, deputy sheriff at the sheriff's office. Celebrating 15 years of service, we have Doug Blomker with emergency management, Cory Dash with equalization, and Heidi Jerky with planning. And celebrating 40 years of service, we have Dan Grapevine with highway and Susan Hopkins with register of deeds. And I'm happy to let you know that today we have several of our employees with us. We've got, if you guys want to stand, some people are saying that they would be happy to take their five-minute opportunity. These are, I think they were kidding.[212.12][212.12](applause) Years, can you believe we have two people celebrating 40 years of service in just one month? Incredible.
It is incredible. Thank you so much.
I understand one is 40 years today.
Oh, really? Wow. Well, thank you so much. Thanks to all of you.
The next item I have for you is to record the volunteers in county departments for July of 2019. Again, another month where we're pushing close to 300. We've got 282 volunteers for the month. So, our thanks and gratitude go to those individuals as well.
Yes, thank you. That's another item to clearly celebrate on behalf of the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For Carrie?
Commissioner Barth.
Carrie, is this a record for volunteers? Or what is our record?
Not quite. I think we've gone into the 290s, so we're close. I don't recall yet that we've gone over the 300 mark, but we've been really close.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is abatements recommended for approval and there are none this week. Next item is notice and request. There's a notice from the Hartford Township of a speed limit change from 55 to 40 on 261st Street from 463rd Avenue to 466th Avenue. Next item is planning and zoning notices. Authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on highway on August 27th, 2019 at the joint county and city meeting for application 19-001 petition to vacate a highway. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you just read, this is a petition to vacate a portion of a highway. The highway is South Overland Pass. It's located east of Sioux Falls, just north of 26th Street. Much of South Overland Pass is already vacated and we'll pull up the map here. And so the petitioner would like to vacate an additional 100 feet of the road right away in order to have more buildable area near his front yard. This highway is located within the joint jurisdiction of the city of Sioux Falls, so will have to be a joint hearing between the county commission and the city council. South Dakota codified law does require that this be published two consecutive weeks prior to the hearing. So action today can be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice and staff is requesting the August 27th, 2019 meeting. Is there any questions?
Commissioner Garcia.
Just when we have the next meeting, a bigger map, put it more in perspective so we can see, you know.
Sure. When I sent this out, I didn't quite have the staff-made map yet, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? I'm going to note that I'm going to recuse myself because one of the applicants is a partner with my husband, but I think I can go ahead and still call the vote. Okay. So I'd entertain a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to note that I recuse myself. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item nine, a petition for compromise of lien. There are none. This is our opportunity for public comment. The room empties out. Opportunity for public comment. So if there's anyone here today that'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Seeing no one rush to the podium, I'll take us to item 10, which is a briefing on the status of uncompleted bank reconciliation accounts since July 2018. Pam, will I have Pam come and speak, please? Thank you.
We'll actually, she's the one who does the reconciling, but.
You are the treasurer, so we'd ask for you to give the report, please.
Well, I can give a report, but if you want to hear what's really going on, you talk to Kelly about reconciling because that isn't what I do. But the problem with reconciling began when we adopted the new munis system. There were some problems with it in the beginning. The people that I have, when I first came, there were no backups for any of the back office jobs and now we have two or three for each one, so in case somebody's sick or something happens, we still have somebody that knows how to do that job. This is my 16th year there and we've never had any problem and we've never been written up for anything. Now we got a little bit behind on the reconciling. Kelly's been working on that diligently for the past few weeks. She isn't able to do anything on that right now for the next two and a half weeks because our backup people, nobody wanted to be a backup person anymore for when we got the new accounting system. So we had to start from scratch and train people all over again. So now we're back to, we have a backup, but the person, that backup person is on vacation for two and a half weeks, so Kelly has to be the deputy treasurer. So as far as I know, the reconciling, we're moving on it. There isn't really a serious problem with it. It'll never get that far behind again. The employee that did, didn't, she got behind with the munis thing and she never did get caught up. And we weren't quite aware that she was that far behind. We knew it was gonna, but we are working very closely with the auditor's office, the IT department. Dawn in IT has just been super helpful. And we are also working with the people over in the auditor's office as well. We're also working with the state auditor, so we hope to have that done soon, but it will never again happen. It probably shouldn't, but there were extenuating circumstances, some of them that are personnel issues that we can't get into. But it's all started with the new munis and nobody else wants to know how to do it and so we're where we are. Now Kelly can give you a more detailed report.
Well, why don't you first let me see if there's commissioners that have questions for you? Are there any questions for Pam? Commissioner Hiebarger?
I'm just wondering, how much training, how many of the pre-meetings did your staff attend and did you attend before we started to go forward with munis? And then how much training did you have your staff go through when we were doing countywide training of munis before we implemented munis?
How many people did I have?
How many people were attending training and were you attending the training?
No, because I don't do that job. But my person that did do that job did attend the training and that's the person that's no longer employed by the county.
But didn't we already know that she was going to be retiring and so we should have been training?
No, we're not talking about that person. She wasn't involved.
Do we have more than one person that was trained?
Yes.
And were they all attending training?
We had one person learn the job to start with. Our goal was to train the people when we knew how to do it.
Other questions? Commissioner Benega.
So, do you do cross-training with all your staff or is everybody specialized?
Well, the front window people all do pretty much the same thing, but some of the front window people can back up the back office people who are mostly accounting people. And those people get backed up by the front people, but there's only special people in that group that learn, were trained to do that job. And so we have, now we have at least two backups for every position.
So there is cross-training or there's not?
Well, there is, well, we have cross-training for several people to back up every job, but we don't have everybody learning how to do every job.
Isn't that a function of management to make sure that we do have people that are going to be able to continue operations when somebody's gone?
Well, you do. And you have a plan that should probably work, but sometimes it really doesn't. And it was like everything came to, I don't know. I have, when I came, there weren't any backups, so when somebody was gone, I don't know what they did. But when I came, I didn't, I saw that as a problem because the main person got sick and then the backup person didn't. So now we have a couple of backups for every job. It's the best we can do with the staffing that we have.
Commissioner Hiebarger?
I think you need somebody that should be able to be available and the odds are if you have a couple.
According to statute, I think that these bank reconciliations are supposed to be done monthly and I'm wondering how many months behind we are in doing bank reconciliations because I know we were a year behind and so.
We're no longer a year behind. Kelly, would you like to come and speak to that?
I think Pam, you should know the answers to these questions. You are the department head.
Can I just say something, please? The deputy treasurer position, there is no people in our office that necessarily want to back up my job. I have a person that backs me up. I have been working on it diligently. We have, keep pushing through of all of last year and I keep pushing through this year to keep going forward because there are some timing issues with, between, with munis and everything and N-code. They feel that there's a timing issue that is going to be resolved. They just don't know what that is yet. We are down, it shows in our bank that we have more than what we have on the books. So it is down to very minimal of what it was before. There is a timing issue. So everybody, right now we are, I'm in February of this year and we keep plugging through until those timing issues are resolved. Dawn has been helping me along with Kim over at the auditor's office to help reconcile this difference. I stepped into taking this position on and she was six months, seven months behind when I took this on. So to get 10 months of reconciling done in the timeframe that you first gave us was not going to happen. It's a very tedious thing and as I keep going from month to month, it does get faster.
Commissioner Garcia.
Are we working from last year forward or this year backward? Because I mean, if we started at this year, it would give us.
Last year forward. I started with where Amy left off last year and have pushed through.
Okay. But I mean, if we reconcile this month's statement, at least we would know that we reconcile.
You can't go, because you have to go back and do checks and balances and I am checking off everything that has come through the bank statement and that's why we feel that there is a timing issue between munis and what happens at the bank.
Pam, do you know how much money we are off at this point?
$476.53.
I know how much we were off. I could have given that answer.
So the last bank statements that we've received is June of 2018. When do you think we will get another bank statement? Is there a reason we don't have?
You get those bank statements because I get the bank statements every month.
Well, the bank reconciliation, maybe. I apologize if I misspoke.
Yep, July is done along with August is all completely at zeroed.
And when will you submit those to?
I didn't know that I was supposed to give those to you guys, so I will get those to you.
And those are last year's, not this year's.
Correct.
So I just, there's not many, I don't think a bank would go a whole year without reconciling. Kelly, I'm not upset with you at all, but this is a concern. This is part of state statute that we're supposed to have this done and it just keeps, I realize you're working at it. This is the responsibility of that office. You think of how many millions of dollars go through that office and the bank statements were not, and wondering how many, was it when you came on board that we realized that they weren't even being done?
I didn't realize that Amy was that far behind. She never asked for my help when I was training to do her job. I asked what I can do with her. She didn't really show me how to do that. I would help her a little bit of what she wanted me to do with it, but she wasn't fully training me how to do it because she wished, she said several times, she wished she could train me on it, but she wasn't sure how to be doing it herself.
Pam, when did you know that we were not submitting bank reconciliations?
I didn't know that we do, who do we submit them to? I don't do the bank reconciliation. My person does. I work with the auditor's office. I work with the IT department and we work very closely on this stuff. I knew, I knew there were problems when we had munis. I knew that Amy was a couple of months behind. I also knew that working, there's a timing issue there that they were working on trying to figure out what it is and they think it, my understanding is they think it has to do with when we switch from munis to whatever.
So you don't remember when you were aware of that Amy was this far behind? Because we weren't getting the statements on a monthly basis.
Does Amy send you one on a month? Did Amy?
No, they go to, I believe they go to the auditor's office and then they come to us. And the auditor's office wasn't getting them, so we don't get them.
The last ones that we received were presented to the commission on November 13, 2018. They were being presented on a monthly basis and now we haven't received any since November and they were, and that was the May and June ones for 2018. And we have been trying to work with you for several months now to see what kind of progress was being made and unfortunately, we weren't getting any specific information about what progress was being made. We hadn't received any further reconciliations. And so that was the purpose of this agenda item today is so that we could make sure this process gets on track and that we get caught up because we all have a responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure that all the money going through your office is being properly accounted for.
And we have been working on it all the time with one employee who then left and then another employee, but before you can train a whole bunch of people to do it, you got to learn somebody to do it perfectly.
Well, I think it's also a concern that because we have someone on vacation, that Amy has, excuse me, that you have to move her and you have to put somebody else in that, and so nobody is doing it again and we're already this far behind. And so maybe you need to be paying overtime or you need to be doing something because this is important. And it's not her fault. It's not her fault. If she quits, what are you going to do?
I have another backup person.
Well, then the backup person should maybe be working on this or something.
Backing up somebody else. In order to have the wait down to 15 minutes or less, you have to have 12 windows running at all times. And in order to do that, you can't have all those people doing the back office jobs. So we do, we do, I'm not making excuses. I think that I didn't know that Amy got that far behind. I also knew that, this is what I was being told, that, that she was working closely with the auditor's office and with the IT people who also know everything about what we do in the banking thing. Munis was, I don't know, how much time should I allow for the switch over from computer programming? I don't know. But I know that in the, this is my 16th year and it was never, ever a problem until we went to munis. And it does take a little time to get some of this stuff straightened out and working. IT is working on it with us and we do believe, and we're working with the auditor's office, we do believe that there is a timing issue.
Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, Pam, there's more to your job than answering people at the window. The fact that you have them operating, backing up other functions, that's one thing, but I happen to know that people are waiting hours on the telephone to get an answer. And you told me previously that it's not a priority. Why isn't this legally required thing a priority? Why are you not doing the job that the statute requires a treasurer to do?
Which job are you talking about?
I'm talking about these monthly reconciliations. $400 million goes through your office. How do we know that it's only $476?
Well, because there is a checks and balance system.
Only if you work with the auditor. The auditor can't do a thing if you are not doing your job.
Okay, I think we've made the point pretty clear that this is something that needs to be done, that we will expect that this be done. I would like you to start submitting the treasurer's reports that you have completed so we can see those. We'd like a timeline for when you think you can continue those. And I would agree with Commissioner Barth that this is ultimately the responsibility of the treasurer who's elected to oversee that office and be responsible for all the activities that take place there.
Well, let's say this, that if I'm president of the United States, that doesn't mean I'm involved in every little detail that's going on in the United States government. That means he has department heads, he has people assigned to do that job and he relies on those people. If those people make a mistake or if they didn't get things done, I don't think it was all Amy's fault.
I think the point is, and I know that there's been at least one president who's had a sign on their desk that says the buck stops here. And I think that's the point we're trying to make.
But that doesn't mean he manages every little office and every little detail.
Okay.
And I agree that the buck stops here.
Thank you. Any further questions?
And I would point out that I've been serving in elected office for 40-some years and I've never had a problem in any office that I've served.
Serving is different than doing the job.
Commissioner Hiebarger?
You've got to do the job, Jeff, at every job, no matter which one it is.
Commissioner Hiebarger?
I have another comment that you talked about keeping the line short, which I know has been one of your priorities. But what type of new technology have you implemented in your office to make those lines short? Last week, the line I was told was past the stairwell again and a lot of those people are in line.
Well, the line can be almost to the register of deeds and if you have 12 windows going and if we have that kind of a crowd, we also have the back office people pulling people into the office doing that job.
Excuse me, Pam. What technology have we implemented? Because a lot of those people in line are people who are just getting their stickers for their cars, which can be done online and can be done by kiosses. So how is your office facilitated, people's getting to know that they can do this or sending that direction? I mean, we could have had a kiosk in our, in our building and said, "All renewals were stickers, go to the kiosk." It would have freed up windows for you. I know sometimes you have to take three windows and designate them for just specifically tags and you're losing your staff. I mean, it's pretty expensive to have somebody sit there and do the paperwork when you can do it at a kiosk.
You could do it at a kiosk, but a lot of people don't like to do it that way, so they come to our office. And a lot of our, there's a lot more new vehicles out there than we used to have and those require people coming to the office because they have to do title transfers. And perhaps if you think you can run my office better than I am, then maybe you should run for the job.
I don't want to run for the job. We've had this conversation before. I just.
And as for the telephone, when, if somebody's answering the phone, they answer the phone the best that they can. But when you want those people and you don't want that long so line, when instead of answering that phone, they're pulling people into our office, taking care of the people who are in line. And people, you know, we have a concentration of some elderly people in this state and those people are not as excited about using the technology. And if you keep in mind that technology isn't the solution. If we have technology, the phone works, but if we don't have anybody to answer that phone, then we can't. And consistently for several years now, I've been asking you for additional employees. I pointed out, we don't really have a specific person to do mail. We don't have, we have a person that's assigned to do the phone, but that can only happen if we don't have a three-hour line out there. So if you want to be, I mean, we need people to do that stuff and if they can't do it, then you have to live with the efficiency that you provide.
Commissioner Hiebarger?
Technology would take care of a lot of your problems with lines and I think that that is.
It would not take care of the problems with lines, sorry. The kiosses are out there, Cindy. They're not going to them. Some of them are, some of them aren't.
Those, I think, just a second. Kelly, you know, this is really the treasurer's report, so we appreciate you being here and we really appreciate all the work that you do. I would note that we, as part of the budget process, really encourage you to look at opportunities for technology and we took the initiative as a commission office to bring in a GovTech and your staff came and you came to listen to that, but then when they presented to the commission on the next day, you didn't even come to the meeting. And so we've seen very little interest or initiative on your office as to how to improve management through technology. And that's what we need to see before we can consider additional staffing.
We have security labs that do our work instead of GovTech. And we have GovTech does, GovTel does the turret.
Well, we are actually reaching out to security labs to see what kind of product that they can do. The things that GovTech was here presenting on were slightly different and it was increased efficiencies that would allow your staff to be more productive. So that's the kind of thing that we'd like to see, particularly what we are here to talk about today, we're bank reconciliations.
And we're working on it.
And we would like progress and we would like reports and communication to us on a regular basis as to how that is progressing.
Instead of the report that Bob was supposed to get?
No, you need to, you need to submit your monthly reconciliation reports, but we also, we've been trying to get communication from you for several months now on this process and we finally had to put you on the agenda so we could learn exactly where we are. So I would like continued input and communication from your office as how that process is moving forward. Is there anything else? If not, I think we're done. Thank you.
I just have one other comment. And that's, one of the basic responsibilities of management is to make sure that you have good, strong internal controls so that the people you report to have the reports on time and the public that we are responsible for has some confidence that you are doing your job on time correctly and that we won't have any management exceptions in the legislative audit. I know we're going to hear about this in the legislative audit process. And frankly, you should have advised us of that. Communications is part of your responsibility and with that responsibility, you should have told us ahead of time that you were having all these other issues that you frankly couldn't manage. And unfortunately, now we're going to have to report to the public that you're not doing your job the way it needs to be done.
Well, we'll see what he writes in the audit report. It's my understanding he's not going to be anything.
We will ask those questions and certainly I would be shocked if it's not in the audit report.
There'll be a mention of it.
Anything further?
Depending on, well, never mind.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to item 11, which is to consider five resolutions to approve of property tax payment proposals for Rutgers 36882, 40892, 23978, 59806, and 75076. Carol Muller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners Carol Muller. And yes, before you today are, I'm trying to pull it up. I'm sorry, my apologies. Something, there we go. Okay. The action requested is the approval of payment resolutions for five different properties. Those five different properties are all several years, multiple years behind on payment of taxes and our auditor has worked closely with these five homeowners to get them caught up. And I'm not going to go through them all today because you've got them in front of you in the resolutions. One of the payments would start in August, the rest would all start in September and the majority of them end in 2020 with one, I believe, going into 2021. So property tax record 36882 is for the amount of $15,653.24. Property Tax Record 40892 is for the amount of four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Property Tax Record 23978 is for the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Property Tax Record 59806 is in the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-nine cents. Property Tax Record 75076 is in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
Questions? Commissioner Heiburger.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're quite far behind in also our property tax issues. And I believe that was also a treasurer's office problem, that this were behind. Am I stating this incorrectly?
I guess I think that's probably a question for the treasurer's office as to the status of that. I know that they're working through a lot more this year.
At least the lines are short.
Any other questions? All right, if not, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call vote, please.
I just want to say, you know, we don't use people's names on these things, but when people owe us tens of thousands of dollars, it seems almost that we should be ashamed not to. Anyway, that's my comment.
Commissioner Benega.
I wore the wrong color shirts.
Yes, you did, totally, totally.
Unrecognizable, I'm sure.
A mind blank.
I think that the other thing that I'd like to see, now that we've pursued these payment plans, is to give us an aging, if you will, on the payments of these properties, when and if they're making payments, and if they're keeping up to date with a promise that they had agreed to.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to point out, and thanks to the State's Attorney's Office for reminding me, that in each resolution, it does list the name of the person involved, so that we aren't trying to hide anything. Commissioner Karski.
I appreciate Commissioner Benega's comment, because I was looking at this too, thinking, I mean, we're being pretty generous with the payment structure. We don't have to do this, and we don't do this for anybody else. Most people are pretty much pay their taxes on time because they, I mean, that's the obligation of being a citizen of where you live. What happens, or when will we know? I mean, your payments are due every month on this day, and if we miss a month, I mean, how are we going to be made aware of that? Does the auditor's office work with the treasurer's office?
I would actually defer to Olivia, because she's passing me notes that explain that they do have a process involved, so.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We've actually created spreadsheets for each of these properties that track how much is due, on what date, and if a payment has been made, and on what date the payment was made. So that way, we can look at it monthly, and we can notify anybody of late payments or just not receiving them.
Good.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Question two, basically for Olivia. And I don't think we have this, but do we have any type of reminder system that, hey, your payment's due next month? I'm just thinking, now technology is changing so much, and we can do text messages to people and say, "Your payment is due." Obviously, auditor's office doesn't do that, but do we have any way of reminding these people your payment's up?
Right. Not that I'm aware of at this time, but I can certainly talk to Bob about that and see if there's something we can do.
I personally know I cannot have too many reminders in my life, so. Anything further? All right, I had a motion and a second, so I think we are to the roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item 12, which is to consider a motion to appoint three candidates to the Minnehaha County 2019 Tax Deed Surplus Property Appraisal Board. Kim Adamson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the auditor's office. At this time, we're asking you to appoint the 2019 Tax Deed Appraisal Board. The auditor has identified three candidates to be appointed to this board. They are Ken McFarland, Kyle Helseth, and Tom Dempster. The responsibilities of this board will be to tour the tax deed properties identified for sale on October 5th, and to establish the estimated market value of those properties. At this time, there are about twenty subject properties. That number, we hope, will diminish over time as the property owners are able to resolve their outstanding tax balances.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Are the remaining about twenty, are they working on tax payment plans or anything, or we're...
They are. The treasurer's office is working with those property owners to identify any individuals who are willing to try to set up some payment plans.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Bob Litz, our auditor, has also worked to try to prevent us seizing people's homes as well, hasn't he?
He has. He's met with a number of parcel owners and was very involved in setting up the payment plans you considered in the agenda item this morning.
Certainly, we don't want to be trying to evict some guy with dementia that has forgotten to pay his taxes for the last eight years, and, you know, whose family may not understand the duress that they're under as far as the property. In fact, I know of a guy whose house was foreclosed because he didn't make any mortgage payments. He had twenty-five grand in the bank, and just was an airhead. But do we have any other amounts similar to those amounts we just approved?
I'm not aware of the balances associated with these twenty parcels at this time. That is something we would have to report back on.
Further questions? All right, if not, entertain a motion to appoint the three candidates to the Minnehaha County 2019...
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So that takes us to item 13, which would be to authorize the chairperson to sign Amendment Number One to the South Dakota Department of Transportation Agreement Number 410730 to fund the Maple Park Street Corridor Study. D.J. Boothey, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. In August of 2018, we entered into an agreement with the State of South Dakota to conduct a corridor study on Maple Street in Sioux Falls and its Park Street and the city of Brandon. As part of that study, the study advisory team authorized some additional individual landowner meetings with several different residents along that corridor. And as a result, there were some additional expenses in the amount of eight thousand, fourteen dollars and sixty cents. With the agreement that we have with the State of South Dakota, the county is responsible for eighteen point zero five percent of that, which totals one thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. So today, we're asking for your approval in authorizing that amendment with the State of South Dakota's agreement.
Questions? Commissioner Karski.
D.J., where does this money come from, the additional eighteen hundred or fourteen hundred dollars?
It will come out of our professional services line item in our annual budget.
Okay.
Other questions?
Just a comment, if I may. This Maple Park corridor study is just going to be a several-year process. We're going to be seeing more and more about. And it's a big deal for, you know, that corridor between Sioux Falls and Brandon, and it's going to be owned by the county, because there's really not a lot of option other than to do that. And right now, it's a very primitive, I think would be a good term to use, dirt road. That's the traffic volume is going to be continuously increasing. And D.J.'s and his team are doing a great job in working with the state and looking for some federal grants to make this happen, just for pure safety and infrastructure that's going on. So get used to talking about the Maple Park corridor. I think you might have said one time where the term Maple Park comes from is...
Yeah, we refer to it affectionately as Maple Park. Neither the city of Sioux Falls or the city of Brandon like that term. But in the city of Sioux Falls, they have Maple Street, and the city of Brandon, they have Park Street. And so we just call it Maple Park because it's the same corridor.
Any further questions or comments? I would agree with Commissioner Karski. It's a very complicated project that has a lot of stakeholders involved in it, and we appreciate the work that your team is working on, doing on that, so.
I'd make a motion to authorize the chairperson to sign this agreement for transportation agreement 410730, Amendment One. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to authorize the chairperson to sign an agreement with Infrastructure Design Group, Inc. to replace the culverts on Highway 109. D.J. Boothey.
Commissioners, we're looking at doing a covert replacement project next year on Highway 109, just northeast of Rowena. This is likely going to be a big box covert or several large-barreled culverts. Right now, they're twin eighty-four-inch round culverts. And so what is a little bit unique with this agreement is, not only is it type, size, and location, or an investigation of the hydraulics and the location for this covert replacement, it also includes some training for our in-house staff, our engineering team. So during final design, they will actually be completing the plans and specifications for the project, and that will set them up well for future covert replacement projects. They'll be able to do more of that work in-house. And so the type, sizes, and location, or the TSNL portion of this, is, I think, just over half of the fee. And then about fourteen thousand dollars is actually the consulting staff working alongside our staff during the final design portion of the project. So with that, we're requesting your authorization for the chairperson to sign the agreement for professional services with Infrastructure Design, Inc. in the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Questions? D.J., I was just curious, have you done similar types of things before where you've had this kind of training component to the contract?
On a real minimal level, we have. A good example would be a surveyor. When we had Andrew Nielsen as a surveyor in our department, or as an engineering technician, he worked alongside the same company and another company to gain some experience that was required to sit for the professional line surveyor's exam. And so that was a successful method that we were able to have real-world experience rather than sending him to a conference and having more of a classroom education. So it was really successful there. A unique thing with AutoCAD training is it's really hands-on. You need to be in a classroom with a computer or in an office working on a project. And so that's a common method for training that the city of Sioux Falls does. And so we've decided that we would like to try it as well.
It appears, and correct me if I was wrong, but it appears that IDG has a staff person who's got some credentialing and this kind of training?
That's correct, yeah. Krista May actually has done that type of training for the city of Sioux Falls and other agencies as well.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the chair to authorize, or authorize the chair to sign the agreement for professional services.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
I ask, D.J., just a quick question.
Sure.
With the grant that you talked about a couple of weeks ago that was frankly not expected, that you learned about, that was the million dollars, is that, can you prioritize where that goes currently, or is that, you have to wait until you get the information? I mean, we continue to talk about Maple Park. Is that something that can be used for that?
No, it's not something that could be used towards Maple Park. We have received enough information from the state about this additional funding that we know that it has to be specifically spent on bridges.
Okay.
And so bridges that are in poor condition, that are rated through our inspection program, they have to be in poor condition, and they have to be replaced or rehabilitated. And that money just has to be spent on consulting fees or construction costs for those bridges. And so any kind of roadway reconstruction project that we may have that includes one of those bridges, it could be spent on the funds spent towards the bridge. But a roadway reconstruction project such as Maple Park that does not have any bridges in poor condition, it would not be available for that type of project.
Good. Thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Barth.
D.J., there's an expression in your business, something like structurally deficient bridges.
Yes.
Out of our, and I lose track, but out of our ninety-seven bridges, how many do we have in Minnehaw County that are in that category?
Right now, I think that we have about a hundred and ninety-five bridges on our system. That kind of moves up and down from year to year. Out of a hundred and ninety-five bridges, I think we're around thirty or forty structurally deficient. And that term is kind of losing its popularity because it sounds...
Bad.
Bad. And it doesn't necessarily mean that it's bad. It just means that it's decreasing in value towards the system. And so they're trying to use other terminology and more of a grading system of good, fair, and poor, rather than structurally deficient. But using the old terminology, I think we have thirty to forty that are in structurally deficient condition.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you, D.J.
Thank you.
Takes us to item 15, which is liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today? Commissioner Heiburger.
This week was the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board meeting, executive board meeting. And I sit as a member on the executive board. And so just a couple of things we touched on there. One, just to remind you all that the convention, the commission convention is coming up September 16th and 17th, and it'll be in peer. And the theme this year, or the, yeah, the theme is Mardi Gras. So get your masks out and all your beaded necklaces to bring along. Our main focus of this meeting was to pass the resolutions or to consider passing of the resolutions that were brought forward from the different districts. Minnehaw County sent two of ours forward. One was to add an additional word to Policy Statement Number 24. And what we wanted to add was the additional funding for mental illness, and so our mental health. These are policy statements that the association uses when they're going to lobby for bills that are brought forward in peer. And so the policy statements, if it's in a policy statement, then our association automatically supports what bills are, what bills are listed, subject matters are listed in our policies. And so one of them that we had was to add to Policy Statement Number 24, which you guys can look those up if you want. I'm not going to read them all to you, but we added, looking for additional funding for mental health. And then the other one that we passed that was for Minnehaw County was also added to Policy Statement Number 24. So we reworked that whole policy statement. And there we'll be adding, supporting the development of triage centers and to eliminate the regulatory barriers. And so we reworked that statement. I don't have the wording with me. When we get that, you guys will all see it, actually. Now that these, there were six brought forward, all six of them did pass with a few changes. Those will be brought forward at the convention in September. They will be reviewed by the whole body of membership and then passed or discarded by the body of the SDACC. And so that was really the bulk of our meeting this last time, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to comment on Cindy's report. One is Cindy is about to become President of the State Association. The other comment is actually ran into one of our state senators this past week, Wayne Steinhour. And he was disappointed that we hadn't put in to raise the, what is it, bed and breakfast? Or the tourist tax to support the counties. He had submitted that bill last year, and he feels that we should revisit that.
My comment on that is that we actually discussed it in old residence. I brought that up because that is a part of our policy statement, that the SDACC will support bills that initiate a bed and booze tax. And so that's already in our platform. And we discussed that, and I said that Minnehaw County was contemplating whatever, that we had someone who was interested in sponsoring that bill. So I let them know that we will probably be supporting that as association again to try to push this forward and looking for support from the rest of the state.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thanks. Any other liaison reports today? Commissioner Karski.
Just a brief triage update. In the last several weeks, the mayor and I have met with quite a few different people, local business people that have an interest and passion for what the triage will do. Last week, we met with five senior people from the governor's office. Today, we're meeting with individuals from the Helmsley Foundation Charitable Trust. We are reaching out, and the mayor is driving a lot of this, quite honestly. But we're reaching out to everybody and anybody to let them know that what we're doing. And we are putting our hand out, too, asking for help monetarily. And just to reemphasize, because this morning, a friend of mine, who I have breakfast with weekly, said, "So triage, is that like a management facility for if an emergency happens?" No, this is a facility for people that have mental health, addiction, sobering, detox, you know, the type of things that really don't get a lot of attention from government or in our society because somebody needs to take care of it, and that's what we're trying to do. Dusty Johnson, I heard him on the radio yesterday and today. Throughout the statistic, and this is, you know, related to what happened down in El Paso on a date, and forty thousand people a year die from suicide. Another seventy thousand die from addiction and drug abuse overdoses. So either intentionally or unintentionally, we have a lot of people dying from the... Um, so either intentionally or unintentionally, we have a lot of people dying from the issues that, um, are in our, in, in our and every community. So that's what the triage, um, facility and project is working on. And just to let you know, it's almost a daily thing in my life to have a conversation on it. So we're working it.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you're doing on that and to the mayor, uh, who I do know has been really, um, very vocally and, um, supportive of that. So thank you. Anything else? Okay, so that takes us to new business. Is there any new business today? If not, is there any old business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I had a question for Olivia. Uh, you know, with the cancellation of the Houston's racetrack, uh, raffle, whatever, we had approved a, uh, a one-day liquor license for, for them. Uh, did they pay us for that and is that refundable to them?
They did pay us for it. Um, as far as being refundable, I guess I've never, um, looked into that avenue. I don't think it would be. They submitted the application, they were provided the license. I will say that the license did have the specification on it that they cannot sell alcohol if a race is not taking place. So at this point it is now invalid. But I don't think they'll be getting a refund.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Any further old business? If not, I'd entertain, oh, excuse me, Commissioner, or Carol, good morning.
Carol Muller, Commission Office. I just want to look ahead a little bit at calendar. Just, um, we'll be missing two people next week because they will be at meetings with, um, the judicial system and mental health. So we will only have three people next week. And then looking ahead at the 27th is the joint meeting. And, uh, I just want to double check on reminding on that one because, uh, at that meeting, at the joint meeting, we will be having the budgets for Metro, Library, and Museum. Will be the three. But we'll also have one planning zoning item. And Commissioner Bender, it sounds like you will need to recuse yourself from that one. So if anybody has any other timing issues, please let me know because we'll need to have people there to get that passed. That was it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, now I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, thank you.